Perfect.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. All right, so we are recording this remote meeting. It will be posted on YouTube, just so everyone is aware. Anyone else wore and whatever way doing whatever you just know that. Please know I want to note that as a remote meeting, we are accepting citizens comments via email up until the citizens comments agenda item, and you'll see that at this point, it comes about 15 minutes in. With that in mind, if you have anything you wanted to email to me, please feel free to do so at b hoolihan@maynard.k12.us. So that's the standard that we use for our all the email addresses of the school. All right, so I just want to make sure everyone's where, if they had anything they wanted to. Okay, and also thank you to everyone for joining us. You're joining, please either mute yourself or we'll be able to do that for you. But we are, oh, I think that is Mary Brantley. Mary Brantley, you might be school committee. Yes. She made it. All right. Okay, so by roll call, Mary Brantley, are you here?
Yes.
I don't think I did myself either. Bethland Houlihan is here too. Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, so now we are going to look to approving our prior meeting minutes. And as you'll see in our folder, there are two sets of minutes. They're short but sweet from the super interviews. So you can see there's one from December 16th, 2019, and one from December 18th, 2019. So we can either take them separately if people have any comments to make, or we could take them together. There are no revisions that particularly need to mention.
I don't have any revisions. I know Lydia had some grammatical corrections, so maybe we can accept them both with the grammatical correction she's noted within the minutes.
All right, would you like to make a motion to that effect, and we'll see what happens?
Yep, I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for December 16th, 2019, and December 18th, 2019, as they are noted with the grammatical edits that Lydia Clancy has indicated.
Right here, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, and we are per remote meeting protocol going to take a vote by roll call. So Natasha Rivera?
Yeah.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy is muted again, and she says she has comments, so I'm going to retract the vote and return to comments. I don't know why she keeps getting muted. All right, go ahead, Lydia. Sorry about that.
No, I was just gonna say I made grammatical comments on the notes that Natasha referred to.
Yeah, so they're not substantive comments, they're just grammatical.
Just, yeah, just like Michael Richard instead of Michael Richards, stuff like that.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, so then if that's all there is to say, now we will move into the roll call vote to approve the minutes for the motion. So I'll start with Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Bethland Houlihan? Yay, that's a zero to approve the minutes for the motion, just for December 16th and December 18th. Great, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna next move into looking at the agenda again. My report, which is just very brief again, I want to just, first, we just, as I'm sure everyone has seen in the communications, our Herculean effort was undertaken by all the staff and the leadership on many different levels, not just within the central office. I feel like everyone's had to take a leadership role and step up, no matter what role they may play to make this happen and get the remote learning plans in place and to do that for all students. So I'm sure that you've seen by now the rollout and that of the overall plan and then plans specific to different students and needs is this beginning is happening as well. And we've begun with the remote learning this week, and I just wanted to our thanks for what everyone is doing and for during this very remarkable moment in which we find ourselves. So with that in mind, I also just wanted to say, I know that we are very disappointed that we were not able to, that the intent and consideration around the parade was so wonderful and that that is not a possibility to be able to do at this time in relation to the COVID-19 situation, find ourselves with the forthcoming peak of that. But we are very grateful for the enthusiasm and know that we'll find other ways to harness that, and just wanted to be appreciative of that as well. And other than that, let me just see what else. I wanted to mention that there's been so many good things going on. You see, there's MHS students have done Earth Day poetry. We've gotten videos back and forth of appreciation, teachers to students, students to teachers. There's just a lot of ways in which communities being built in very creative, innovative ways and spontaneously throughout this. And we have a lot more to try to figure out as we move forward and as this unfolds, and it's all seems to be at this moment changing. So we're very grateful for everyone's work in this, and you'll hear some of that tonight as we grapple with where things. So that's all I'm going to say right now. A lot more will be covered as we move forward, except to just say if anyone did have a public comment, please, just a reminder that those are being taken via the email to the chair, which is myself, so b hoolihan@maynard.ma.k12.us. B hoolihan@maynard.k12.us until the public comment period, which will be after the interim receiver, which is coming next. I will hand it over to you, Mary Jane. Are you able to actually, what you need to give a report, given you have no power on your phone?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to remember. Even my computer just died. It was in the car.
Okay.
My phone, so. So this is. So the MCAT is canceled, so that legislation came through last week, so that's exciting. And they also extended the Student Opportunity Act to May 15th. This is week two, phase two of the Remote Learning Plan, and I know that we're gonna have some kinks that we have to work out coming forward. Correspondents will go out after the school committee to explain how we came up with the Remote Learning Plan, and we will be eliciting feedback from families at the end of the first week. And we've had quite a bit of feedback already, albeit it's been very positive, but people are looking for ways to streamline, and that's something that we're gonna probably look to do to help everybody out a little bit in that area. I'm trying to think what else I had. Seniors had a great video they sent out to staff. It was lovely. If any of you get a chance to see that, the seniors sent out a great video to staff. Again, we also had students that participated in Poetry Month, because April is Poetry Month. And we just had a meeting last week, so I don't have too much else that I can think of. If my computer comes up, I will chime in. But right now I have no power, so that's all I have.
Very good. I do just want to mention in that regard, if we do lose power, we're looking at the option of turning to the phone. Colleen would be able to to continue recording via phone, so we were going to try if it does turn out that we lose power to try to use that option. So folks may wish to write down the phone number, because if you do lose power, you might not be able to easily access that number and the code that goes with that.
Right.
Okay. All right, very good. So Mary Jane, are you all settled, and anything else that came to mind?
I'm trying to think. I wish I had. That's all I can think of off the top of my head. I'm sure I had more, but honestly, I everything is locked in here, so.
Yeah.
I'll have to talk to you later.
Forget. Okay, that sounds good. All right, so then we're going to move into citizens comments, and I'm just going to look again here and just refresh to make sure that I am catching anything that may come into the inbox. And I hadn't received anything up until the meeting, so I do want to just give a few moments in case and there was anything that anyone wanted to submit via citizens comment. So I am just going to hold another moment or two. One more refresh. Okay. I'm not seeing anything come through. If it does, please know that any time you send an email to us, we are always, that is always a channel to be able to communicate. Obviously, anything that's within our purview, we would then work with, or we would send you to the right channels, if that's the thing to do. Obviously, we want to do everything we can to support and make sure that everyone's being considered. So I'm going to then Yep, okay, I'm gonna move on from citizens comments at this time, and I am going to move into our first agenda item, which is considerations of April vacation. So in relation to that, I, just for everyone to be aware, we do have a folder that does have within it, within our folder for this meeting, is the results that Colleen did just update. And then for folks to be aware, just for, there's also suggested wording for a motion you might wish to make and to ensure that we're doing that in a way that will be legit. So there's both the staff survey results here and the parent survey. And in the staff survey, we had 70, 120 total responses. And 76.7% was, were in favor of continuing remote learning through April vacation, so that left 23.3% keeping, asking to keep April vacation. And it was using one or the other. So that was through the staff. Through the parents' survey, which was the same question, there were 784 total responses. 622 of those, or 84.4% voted to continue remote learning through April vacation. And then 122 responses, 15.6% indicated they'd like to keep April vacation and have no remote learning. So those are the results that we got from those two surveys. I don't, if there's anything anyone wants to say or?
I had a question. If the survey included the, for the staff, was included the para? Or if it's all together, or if it's just the teachers?
I believe it was just, it went out, went out from the MEA. I'm assuming they sent out to everybody, but I don't really have an answer on that.
Okay.
Oh, and just to be aware, if did April vacation, there was one holiday in four days, but the new last day of school will be Monday, June 15th.
That is correct.
And also, I think to note, Monday is a holiday, so that would not be a consideration to cancel. It's a state holiday, Patriots' Day, so we're considering the Tuesday through Friday. Is that correct?
Yes, it's only a four-day, it's a four-day work. They'll have Monday off anyway, because it's a holiday.
Yes, so Monday, the 20th would be off in any case. And then there'll be four days for remote learning.
I mean, this is so tough. You know, I know that the response is really, you know, great to see. I mean, there's obviously pros and cons to both, and I don't think there's a wrong answer. Or I think it's just how people are adjusting to the new rollout of the remote learning and transitions and how that, you know, impacts their family. And some feedback I've gotten was folks feel that they would like to decompress, you know? Some people have taken off time to be with their family in anticipation of that. But I think the data provides a really good indication of what the staff and the community desire.
That is a good point. It's tough, because clearly there's a range of needs. I was thinking of, I mean, this may not help for folks that had been anticipating taking time off, but maybe, I think it'd come up as a suggestion from a conversation with someone around potentially having, having an extra vacation day in May, adjacent to a holiday, so you end up having like a four-day weekend to give a little break once we get going.
Right, I mean, that's something that I.
Assuming that, that we don't, that we continue with remote learning. I don't want to anticipate anything that's gonna happen, but even then, maybe we decide that we would still have a holiday to give everyone a little bit of a, that take an extra day off to give everyone a little bit of a.
It does look like that some districts, from what Colleen had put together, had done a hybrid consideration. But I don't, I don't know how other school committee were. Some of them had the Tuesday off also, so it maybe extended the, you know, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Looks like a couple of districts had done that as well, or had the Friday, following Friday off. So it's more of a three-day week. Tuesday through Thursday, and then it goes, starts off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, another three-day week or three-day weekend.
I know a couple of the people that contacted me basically said that because we only just started the remote learning, that at least having the whole week off was gonna be stressful because of the, just the change. You get used to, you know, trying to get into this new group this, and then next week we have off. So they were at least pushing to have the week off, or the week still working, you know, still doing school.
I thought that we could, because from February through June is a long time to not have potentially a break, so I had suggested maybe in May that we do a four-day, a four-day weekend, and so maybe we can talk about that a little later. Just thinking in terms of the teachers, that that's a long stint without a break. But, but it seems resounding that the majority of the people do wanna, wanna keep going, because the staff stop and start again. So just for the kids, just to get them on a, on a routine.
I mean, the other part too, which I, you know, had thought of, is that you don't end early, but kind of considering what this takes for everybody to do, that maybe you take those four days and you just have a couple of four-day work weeks, you know? So you have a couple of Fridays off for about, you know, four days or four weeks. I don't know if that's anything worth entertaining either.
The only thing that I would comment about that is if we are actually back to school, a lot of those Fridays, I think, you know, if we did on a Friday rather than like a Monday, you know, there's prom and there, you know, other, other things that are happening for like the push to the end of the school year that I feel like might that we would just need to take.
Yeah, and I also wonder about like the scheduling that the staff have put together about office hours and stuff. And, you know, I wouldn't want them to have to, if there are things that are scheduled for Fridays, you know, wouldn't want them to have to revisit, you know, that because they weren't anticipating that particular, same thing, or Mondays, you know, whatever the day is. They've made their, they've made their schedules best based on Monday through Friday, and they put a lot of work into that.
I don't know how much the children's fees count, but I gotta say that the kids feel like, well, if there is any chance that we'll be able to like be out and doing whatever we want by, by the time June, like by the time we get to the summer, I'd rather have that time in the summer when we could like be out and hanging out with friends and know we could have that. So I don't know what that, but it does, it is, it did seem to me, it sounded like a pretty, like for everyone's sake, that could be a nice consideration, assuming that we're maybe doing this even in stages, depending on how we, how it ends up rolling out and the recommendations and guidance moving forward after before.
I know some people were concerned that, you know, if we do come back, those extra four days would be nice at the end. But, you know, again, people also want the flow to keep continuing now that we're starting it, so really it's you know, that's what some of the input was, but generally, I mean, the survey pretty much is saying they'd rather work for the vacation.
Yep. Are there any other considerations or? I don't think, I just want to make sure. Natasha, looks like you're muted. I want to make sure you can unmute yourself, or we need to unmute you again, just to be sure. Can you unmute yourself? No, I didn't think so. Let me just make sure you stay unmuted, because I don't want you to not be able to defend you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so any other discussion, any other considerations people want to say before we initiate a motion?
I just think anything we do would have to happen during that week, so if we want to give an extra day off, you know, I think it, so it's not gonna impact, you know, prolonging. I don't know, that'll be the only thing. Otherwise, just keep it, you know, Tuesday through Friday as canceled.
Anyone else? I thought I heard someone else, but?
Yeah, I, I can see the benefit in, in having the Friday off, because several parents that I have spoken with, they don't really force their kids to do much on Fridays anyway. And it might be nice to not have it hanging over their head. And then we could either do a four-day weekend in May in addition to that, or just get out three days early.
They're gonna get Monday off, Patriots' Day.
Yes.
They're gonna have a three-day weekend beginning.
Can I, this is Jennifer, I'm sorry, I'm on the phone. Can I jump in for a quick second with a suggestion?
Sure, go ahead, Jennifer.
So I think the other consideration that we don't know about is what's going to happen in terms of coming back to school. And I know a lot of people are saying, oh, we know we won't come back, or we know we will, but in reality, we don't know whether we're coming back or not. And so what you may want to do is make a decision about April vacation sort of in its isolation, and then you can have other considerations for what's going to happen at the end of the year, depending on whether we are back in school or not, because I think that might change the analysis of whether, you know, adding another four-day weekend or things might be worthwhile.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that
Go ahead.
that we cancel April vacation, so that the, we're working, that the schools are working from the Tuesday
April 21st.
Sounds like maybe we lost her.
We lose Mary? Right in the middle of her motion?
I think we might. Mary, are you still there? We can't hear you right now.
I just, yeah, I just got lost. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, did you hear the motion?
No, you're going to need to repeat that.
I'll probably do a better job the second time.
I know, you got this.
I'm gonna make a motion that we cancel the April vacation and have, have school taking place from that Tuesday of school vacation through Friday, knowing that Monday is the holiday, Patriots' Day, and it's a legal holiday.
Very good.
My second.
Any discussion around that? I do want to just add that subsequently means that as of this point in time, we were changed last day of school from Friday, June 19th to Monday, June 15th. All right. Not hearing any further discussion. I'll take a roll call vote, starting with you, Mary Brantley, since she made the motion. Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Um, yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan?
Yes.
Thank you. Hard to know exactly what's the best way forward, so.
Yeah, I don't think that's a right answer. That's the.
So if we did it, and we would strongly suggest families can kind of, as always, at all this time, choose things that are gonna work best for them as well, to balance.
Yes, and I will send that correspondence out to families and teachers this evening.
Great, thank you.
The other thing, just to reiterate, Bethland, in terms, this is Jennifer again. In terms of that statement that you just made, I know we've received, Mary Jane and I, and also some of the building principals, several emails just today about the remote learning plans and asking for clarification or offering suggestions. So, you know, the part of, I think folks may be overwhelmed, some people may be overwhelmed with the amount of work that was sent out today and the manner in which it was sent. We, this is a work in progress for us, so we are taking the feedback that we are getting and are working with our staff in doing this to make sure that we are able to get a product out there that is meaningful, but doable for families. So if people are feeling sort of shell shocked today, you know, I just want folks to know that we are adjusting as we go, and we will be sending out a formal survey, so we will be making adjustments for next week as well.
Great, thank you. Yes, we appreciate that, and appreciate that you're looking to get feedback in more in real time to be able to adjust as we go. And for families too, it's, it's a lot for everyone, so we really partnering around this. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna move into the next agenda item, which is considerations around our own operations at this time and recognizing we're here for a longer in this situation for, over the next month, so thinking about our schedule for right now, remote meetings, and thinking about what makes sense for us. So we wanted to open that up just for consideration with forward and hear your thoughts. I'll say.
We have a next meeting, yeah, our next meeting is supposed to be this Thursday, which I think we're not gonna have, right? So but considering that things are evolving pretty quickly, I don't know if we should consider a weekly standing meeting. I just know the lift, you know, for Colleen and everyone to get scrambled, to put something together, and also just for us and the community to prepare around some of these essential pieces that we're gonna be discussing can take a little bit longer than usual. You know, town hall is not available as, as easily to post also.
Yeah, it sounds like the clarity around that is that there, we want to stay away from Fridays. So anything that we need to post, we gotta post in time, make that request by Thursday. So, yes.
Do we want to go back to Thursday? Maybe not this Thursday, but potentially next Thursday? Or, I don't know, Wednesday?
Standing every Thursday?
Well, you all are meeting on the 21st, right, for the budget subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, but that's at 3:00.
Huh?
That's at 3:30.
Right, so I wonder if it would be helpful then for us to reconvene after that? Maybe the following Thursday?
23rd. Yep.
On the 23rd?
I was actually thinking about that myself.
Oh, I can't hear you. Hold on.
Say that again?
I was actually thinking the 23rd myself, so that way we'll have a lot more clarity on the budget and stuff, so I think that would be.
And that'll kind of give us some time before May 1st, too. And that'll kind of give us some time before May 1st, too.
I can't do the 23rd, but that's okay.
Well, we could do a different day, that's fine, but just sometime after the budget meeting.
Right, we could do Wednesday, the 22nd also.
Does that work better?
Are you available, Lydia?
Yes, the 23rd is Maya's 11th birthday.
Happy birthday, Maya.
Let's do the 22nd, Wednesday, the 22nd.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll see, I think at that point, it would be great if at that point there's guidance from whoever is going to be providing that guidance around whether we're continuing with this.
I wonder also if we need to, and this might be a conversation for that day, about talking about public hearing for the budget. I don't know if we need to plan that now, or if we want to wait until the 23rd to do that.
Oh, Natasha, you're reading my mind.
Wow, how come I can't read anybody else's mind, is it?
Maybe it's just the one person at a time thing.
I know, yeah, it's a very, it's on the fritz, so very selective mind-reading skills.
Yep.
What, what do you think?
Yeah, what are your, what was your, the same thing, Mary Jane?
I was thinking we'll have the, the school committee meeting on the 23rd and then put in something in the newspaper for, you know, having our budget here, you know, a public hearing. And then at that point, then we'd have our seven days, and we could have our public hearing, say like around May 7th, and then we'll be good to go.
Okay.
Go on the old school committee meeting anyway, so that's a good plan.
So, so we're doing the 23rd and not the 22nd?
No, we're doing the 22nd, yeah.
22nd.
I meant the 22nd, I'm sorry.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
And just, um, I mean, we, we need to do whatever we need to put on the agendas, because I feel like we're moving forward with a, just even just being aware ourselves of everything at this time. Just, I feel like what the guidance we got has been to try to keep it still to the most essential things. And I think everyone's been doing a great job of doing that, so I'm just mentioning that again. And in part, one of the things that I'm finding is my, my, my day job is doing some COVID-19 response work around children with medical complexity and families and medical teams. So if it's okay with everyone, I'm thinking the structure I can try to do, it's been fairly challenging to try to manage. I mean, we all have reasons why it's challenging, but if it's okay for us to do the, if there's anything beyond, anything before 5 o'clock, I'll need you to text me, but each day I can definitely, like my office hours, I can check my email at 4:00 and manage anything I need to for that day. So that's okay with folks, and that's what I, I can do, I can hold to.
I missed the first part, sorry. Anything about, what about 4:00?
So if anything that can, anything that comes through inbox that can wait until 4:00, then that's when I'll be able to check on stuff, so I can kind of help navigate and push things through and manage then around whatever the needs to happen. But before that, I would just need a text if it's more time-sensitive. Because I, I'm finding that when it's, if I leave it open, I can't help but go to it, and then I'm ping-pong balling. I, I just, it's not allowing what needs to happen with the, some very emergent response we're doing or in relation to COVID-19 for other stuff. So if we can do it that way, then it's just if there is something more time-sensitive, I just need a text.
Are you thinking like for, in planning the agenda in relation to that?
Yeah, anything like that, yeah, yeah. So if we're starting before that, obviously there's something I know is coming out, I look for it, but I just need a text heads up to be like, hey, there's something, we just need you to review the agenda. So that goes for Colleen and Mary Jane, too. And it's just right now, while we're also managing what's a home.
Yeah, it's a lot, right? You're working at home, you're parenting at home, I mean, just everyone.
Yeah, we're all, we're all in a, yeah.
All overlapping.
Constellation of things that we're trying to manage, yeah. Yeah, so if that works for people, if it doesn't, I'm happy to, to like work that through via email, we don't have to do it here, but I thought I'd mention it here while we're in the context of our procedures and see if we, if that was okay. That works. Okay.
The 22nd, should we do it at 5:00 again, or should we do it at 7:00 for our next meeting?
Let me check my calendar if we, for 5:00, that might.
Like that 5:00 timeframe.
Yeah, I think we did today because of the other meetings were, that were already posted, but I don't know how, if it works.
Especially, because, yeah.
Yeah, 7:00 works for me.
Yeah, I'm looking now, too.
Do, 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 let's see, so we're talking about the 22nd. Oh, 22nd is Secretary's Day. Hi, Colleen, happy early Secretary's Day, for all of you out there. Yeah, I have flexibility.
I could do either, I don't know. 7:00 PM might work better for, for some folks. What if we try a little earlier, like 6:30?
Okay, yeah, because 7:00 is on the top, because I'm thinking, I know Dawn's working, so I'd like to, he still goes in as essential, so earlier help a little bit around evening kid stuff.
Okay.
Meeting, which is going to be the public hearing, should we do it 7:00, like we normally do?
For the public hearing itself?
So Colleen can make plans. Sound good?
I, I didn't hear Mary, I'm sorry.
For the, the May 7th, which is a Thursday, our public budget hearing, do that at 7:00? The normal time. So Colleen can plan that.
Did you hear that? Does it make sense to have the public budget hearing at 7:00 PM, which is our standard time for meeting start?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, for me, it's fine. I don't, I thought, Mary, whether we're going to decide that next week?
No, because Colleen needs to put it in the paper and that, so why don't we?
So Mary Jane, does that work, May 7th, for sure?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've got nothing but time work. Yeah, I was actually thinking that when I was moving, and I was trying to establish a timeline, to be honest with you. I talked to Colleen a little bit today, you know, about posting in the newspaper for seven days, and I think, Colleen, I think that's what we said, May 7th, I think that's what we said, so yeah.
And all the newspaper piece says is that it has the date, what's happening. We'll hold a public hearing on the proposed FY '21 school budget in accordance with MGL. That's all it says. Then the regular agenda needs to be posted, still the 48 hours ahead of time.
Because that would mean that we're anticipating having a school committee meeting that day anyway, right?
Right, it's a regular business meeting.
It's a, right, it'd be a regular business meeting as well.
That is correct.
Okay, and then we'll have to work out. I know I actually got some guidance, and we can figure out how best to do that meeting. Public hearing if it turns out it's a remote meeting. We should know more soon enough to be able to start considering how we do that.
And the Board of Selectmen had their public meeting.
Public meeting.
Yep, and I got another, I know for the Coolidge project, they did a remote public hearing, so there's a couple of examples. We have a few things we can look at and think, and I appreciate Lynda Gear, Lynda Gear reached out to me to let me know that they've done theirs remotely as well, so we'll have a few things to pull from. Okay, anything else on scheduling for the moment? I think it's a good thing for us to keep talking about as we move forward, as we're unfolding.
So we'll, right now, we have the 22nd scheduled, and we have the 7th scheduled, but there's a week in between. So maybe next week we can touch on if we need to schedule something in that midweek in between, as things maybe evolve.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, and the 22nd will be at 6:30, and as of right now, the 7th will be at 7:00 PM. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so then we're going to move into preschool reimbursements and, and any considerations, updates we have to be able to consider around that. We weren't sure quite where things would be at by this time as this unfolding, but given that, we just wanted to check in and see and go from there.
Colleen posted some.
Yeah, I was just gonna, there's, there's a few things in the pre-K considerations as things stand right now in our folder. Thank you, Natasha, for mentioning that.
Do we have any feedback from the preschool teachers?
No, as far as, as far as what?
Um, just how things are going and what their expectations are and feedback they may, feedback they might have from parents.
I did talk to Donna a little bit, and she did mention to me that a lot of parents really just, as we mentioned at the last school committee meeting, a lot of parents really take advantage of the preschool for childcare. And now that they don't need the childcare, and especially if they're not working, it really is becoming a financial hardship for some families. So I do know that we, I did have that conversation with, with Donna earlier. And I also had another parent who paid up to June and is interested in taking her child out of the program, and would like a refund. So, and as you can see by that information, it's kind of all over the place, but it looks to me like, you know, some people are doing a hybrid, some people are giving full refunds, but even so, if somebody, if somebody does withdraw one way or the other, you know, do we give back the money? I guess that's the question. I mean, our preschool teachers are providing services to, to the families.
Right, so normally under, and I think this is one thing that I wanted to make sure before pandemic, if a parent wanted to withdraw their child at any time and had prepaid, what would we normally do? Would we refund?
That, I don't know, I'll have to ask, I mean, Colleen, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, we do refund them if they leave. They are also withdrawn from our enrollment. We do report pre-K students, they're a part of our enrollment, so that would reduce our enrollment, you know, it's preschool.
Okay.
Those are the two main things.
Thank you. So I think, for me, for that piece, I don't think we should change that if a parent wants to withdraw. And we would normally allow that to happen. They would, I think the consideration is what their intent is, if they want to be engaged with their child continuously at some point, then that would be how we need to think about doing a 50% or 100% for those continuing families.
I agree with that.
I just, the sensitivity about, you know, it is a financial hardship, and I'm, I can't, in my mind, justify just making them pay. Normally would not have to pay.
So that, we got two different pieces, right? So one piece is the, what you're saying, what we do under normal circumstances for anyone that chose to withdraw. And then the other piece is while we're in remote learning mode, what will we continue to start? I just heard, stated and then agreed upon that whatever we were doing for anyone that chooses to unenroll, which is that we provide a refund, we would keep that same protocol in place.
And also, when would this be effective, too? Would we say as of April, like we would not be going back to March to do any type of refunds?
I think we'd have to go back to March 16th.
To March 13th, that's the day.
I would go back to the March at least.
Yep, okay.
But it's totally up to you guys, I mean, we can, you can do, but, you know, maybe pay for the month of March, I, I mean, it's, you know, totally your decision. But, you know, initially, you know, March was the day that they, they were not, no longer receiving instruction from the teachers at that, you know, like they would.
Right.
But that was the initial, the initial period, right? It wasn't, when did we find out that it was going to be extended to? Fourth? Yeah.
I think, I think the 30th, yeah, maybe the 26th, I think you're right, yeah, 30th, from 26th, yeah.
So I think that really is officially when we should go back to. Because the, the first, how many, 10 days, 14 days, was, everything was up in the air, we didn't know what was going to happen. It wasn't until things were sort of, you know, canceled long-term that people began asking about refunds and pulling out.
Yeah, that would, that would be true. I think people would appreciate whatever we gave back, to be honest with you, and I do think people that are actually on, like payment plans, I think they're probably.
Hey, Mary Jane, just when you were talking, I don't know if you're moving, but it's a little difficult to hear you, there's movement, and then you're not necessarily up at the phone.
Okay.
There, that's better, that's better, yeah.
I think whatever it is, they would have to unenroll, I think at a minimum. If you, if we issue a refund, I think that would be the, you need to unenroll, right? Colleen, you mentioned, because that's reporting, that's data that we need to report?
Yeah.
Okay, so that part would be, I think, important to stipulate.
At this late time, Colleen, we'd have to, because I thought it was like October, whatever was going on in October. No.
It, we have, we have several different reporting periods during the year. The last one was just past March 1st, the next one is June 1st, and we have to do our, I'm sorry, June 30th, report who was enrolled as of last day of school.
I have received a note that we do have team leader Jane Vastis on the line, if we did want to unmute her and just see what her thoughts are on it.
Would love that.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to unmute you now, Jane, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we appreciate your sharing your thoughts. You're now unmuted.
Thanks. No problem putting me on the spot here. Okay, I think the conversation around tuition payment is a tricky one. First of all, yes, you know, school was closed for all of us. But preschool's also been providing remote teaching lessons. We've all set up Google Classrooms, we've all been providing curriculum and activities as if we were in school in a reduced capacity, because no one could possibly teach a full day of school for anybody at home. So there are always families who have difficulties financially. And those have typ, have typically been kind of acknowledged or just kind of helped through central office. We, we teachers are usually a little bit out of the loop as far as the money part goes. But also, like, what's really best for kids right now? I mean, we, I don't want to unenroll a student from my Google Classroom if they're not able to pay tuition because someone's lost a job. So I think this is a complicated question. It isn't cut and dry, and it isn't all business-related. It's not all about money. Has to come from somewhere, we know, but these are difficult times. There's no, there's no magic answer here, I don't think, but what's best for kids? They're home, parents are working, parents have more than one child lots of times. I think if we continue to provide remote learning for preschoolers to the best that we can to include activities that we would do throughout our day, including sensory and movement and songs and books. I think what's matter with providing them with those opportunities, I think money kind of, it's just in my thinking, not the big question right here. This is tough for everybody right now.
I wonder if we could ask parents to maybe reach out to Colleen just directly, because I really, I like your thoughts, Jane, I think it's, yeah, I, I agree with you as far as that goes. And, but on the other hand, we don't want people that are really struggling to have to pay, so, but those might be the kids that might benefit the most from the structure. So I wonder if we could have parents who are struggling, really struggling, reach out and see if there's a hardship that, that we might be able to. reach out and see if there's a hardship that, um, that we might be able to keep them in the class, um, without paying.
I think maybe we should explore then the 50% option, the tuition that, um.
I was going to suggest that too, Natasha.
Yeah, there is value in keeping, keeping our kids enrolled and, um, but I think we need balancing on, on their own future landscape of just how we need to navigate that. Um, it is hard. You know, ultimately, everyone could unenroll and then, and then what? You know, then you're providing services and then, you know, we, that's a lot of reimbursements and refunds potentially or loss of income there as well, that, for the year that we've considered.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
So, half of our classrooms are typically, students on IEP have a defined disability. The academic teaching is not so hard online, but it's the social play, the emotional.
Yeah.
Goals and objectives that we have, which include most, I'll have to say, most of our kids. That's the tough part, provide remotely, but I'm just going to say, we are working really hard to provide parents with resource, anything that we can do, uh, to support those kids. Um, they're not a tuition question, because we're going to support them regardless, but. You know, I think we're here to support all children and money is, money, money is always a, a big problem.
Money messes everything up, Jean.
You bet.
Guys.
Yeah. This is, I would really like money to be no object in general, but, um, I do agree that if we start with, how can we, the question of how are we able to just support all students? And as much as this is part of the, part of the unfortunate, the part that I really, I actually, is like the most tricky and difficult is that money is always going to be the problem. We also find ourselves in extremely remarkable circumstances right now. So recognizing that as well, it seems like this if ever there was a time to try to do whatever we can to support our community and each other and, and, and give them that, um, if, if it means that we have to figure out some of that money piece. Um, and maybe it is an individual circumstances and, um, considering of, um, some reduced tuition, so people, people don't need to unenroll. That seems to me like, it's staying true to trying to support those families and have those conversations with them to be able to figure it out. Lydia, you're on mute. Do you want me to unmute you? Yes. Okay, just one minute, while I get to the house and I unmute you. Kind of support will unmute, so, there we go, no, okay, there, you are now unmuted.
Thank you. Um, I'm, do we have, um, information on the, at the preschool level for reduced or free lunch programs that only kindergarten enough?
No, that's all available through preschool as well. So any of the students that we've had who have provided, you know, documentation so that we, they can be identified, they're all in the system.
So then we could base tuitions on that on need, couldn't we?
I don't know, I'm not a money person.
Are you? I'm just saying, if we were to decide to give a break and so any, say, any student receiving free lunch, we would not charge them tuition. Any student receiving reduced would get charged a percentage and then all the rest of them get charged 50%, something like that.
There might be more of a Colleen, Irene question.
Uh, also the consideration of any new circumstances that have come up in the context of the pandemic. Irene is not, um, unmuted either right now, so I'm going to unmute her.
Yeah, I think we also need to take into account that because of what's happened, there are families that might be having, um, financial difficulty that we'd need to take into account. But I feel like those families, if they are having those problems, should definitely contact Colleen and, you know, try and work something out.
What I wanted to add was when you were saying you wanted to base it on free and reduced lunch. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the preschool students do not get lunch through the school lunch program? Is that correct or do they?
They don't get lunch, um, they'd have, they've, we've rolled out some smaller things, I think some might get, Jane would know better. But, um, they are actually captured in our direct certification that we send to the state.
Okay, good, that was my question was, would we know whether or not they were free or reduced? Okay, that's, that was what I was, where I was going with that, okay. That's the end of my input for that.
So I'm just going to throw it out there that, um, there are, because we have found this with the backpack program, um, that there are families that should have been taking advantage of services that, whether they're too proud or whatever, they have not. So I don't want to limit it to the free and reduced meals. And I think Beth Lynn said it, um, this, that might have families that have been just barely struggling along, but one or both of them have lost jobs, um, and all of a sudden they're thrown into the mix also. So I'd really rather it be on an individual basis versus just making assumptions.
Well, I wasn't excluding those other families, I was just thinking as a starting point.
Yep, yeah.
Our application rate is low for Maynard. Uh, we did do a direct certification last Monday, given this situation that more families may fall into that, um, whole, um, in the state.
Is part of the low enrollment due to language barrier?
I don't think so.
No.
Um, hold on, Colleen, I want to refer back to the numbers that you had, I think it was the last meeting about, um, scope and impact of how many we're talking about here as well. Was that? I didn't see that in this folder, that wasn't our last meeting folder, correct?
Yes, I think if we make a decision, it has to be across the board, I, I mean, I just.
I don't want you guys to be dated on a case-by-case basis to try to figure that out. I still feel that there's equity in that and, um, and I think that would be a hard thing to manage. That's where I'm looking at trying to assess volume here a little bit, because I could, I think easily get, of all the things that you're juggling, I, I just don't want to have an influx of people calling about, you know, having a case-by-case analysis of their situation.
Yeah, I think if you're going to make a decision, it has to be across the board and really just come up with something to, uh, you know, support it. I, I just, I, I, it's just really hard to do a case-by-case basis, so how do you justify that?
And Jeannie would be the person that goes for pre-K tuition. She does all the payments, does all the reimbursements.
Do we just want to say 50% enrollment, I mean, 50% tuition? To recognize the financial hardship that this is and it's not.
But how do we address the students whose families can't pay it all and yet really, really need to be a part of the pre-K program on a daily basis? I mean, I, I echo Jane's concerns about those kids having to withdraw simply because they can't pay tuition right now.
Can we not just say that the, the students that are on free and reduced lunch or however that the, um, that part is, that, that they don't have to pay and the rest pay 50%?
Again, we've got new people that have been thrown into the mix because of.
I think we need to start someplace, I mean, I don't think we're going to get it right for everybody at this point.
I think you could do, if you do 50% free and reduced lunch for you, and then if there's someone that, um, has immediately lost, someone's lost a job and the family, they're, they've lost income.
Then they reach out.
Yeah, they'd have to reach out in that case, because we won't have that in our records.
Right.
And then we're saying no refunds, right? Because they're continuing to engage?
Unless they unenroll.
If they choose to retroactively to March 26th or 30th, whenever it was, withdraw their child, then I think we do refund them, but they have to withdraw.
So how do you retroactively withdraw? They've been engaged.
Withdraw and we reimburse them retroactively to, like, they, they unenroll, right?
So you think if they unenroll, we only charge them till March 30th?
Yeah.
Okay, if they unenroll and they're not counted in our school enrollment on June 30th, Colleen, I think you're probably the one to answer this. What, if anything, does that cost us? In other words, is it more financially beneficial over the long run to have them on the enrollment versus the cost to, you know, simply give them their money back or not charge tuition? Because again, refunds are only for people that have prepaid. So let's say you move to a 50% option, are you now going to bill people for the month of May and for the month of June?
I don't know how it would impact us financially from state funding. Um, it depends which route, though, I guess. If you refund everybody and unenroll, I, I don't know how many would actually unenroll. That would be the big question that we don't know.
And will, will, will they actually pay a May invoice or a June invoice?
If they unenroll, they're, they're gone.
Right, if they unenroll, they're not going to, but if they stay enrolled, are, are they going to?
And this probably is some decision, is it anyway? If, you know, this gets prolonged, I think it's hard to say what you can do in June when we don't know what June's going to look like or May. Right, so we're talking April and March right now?
Right, right.
As long as schools are out.
It could, but then we'd have to revisit, I think, is what we're, we don't, we can't base it on, on assuming that, because we don't know.
Right, after one more, um, just kind of a monkey wrench. Um, if you're talking about those students who are on free and reduced lunch, I think in order to look for the benefit or, um, if you're thinking about having no tuition versus 50%, I think you should look at how many of those children are already special education students? Because they wouldn't be paying tuition anyway.
Yep, right.
Then another thing to consider, like I said before, it's, it's pretty complicated when you really start thinking.
Oh, here we go, I found the information from last meeting, okay. So there are 31 parents that are billed monthly. 28 have paid through March. Five have paid through April. And four have prepaid the whole year. Alright, so I'm going to make a copy of this and just put it in the folder for today, just so, is that okay?
Yeah, so essentially, um, as of right now, we're talking about, um, any, any refund will be retro to March 30th. In any case, so we're really talking about April and what we're doing in relation to April until we figure out what's happening moving forward. Um, I, I just, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but I would not be surprised if we find we need to refund this and that we're. So it's good to consider all the options at this point. Um, I think, uh, it's a tricky balance, um, and I feel like what I've heard so far is, um, Jane's excellent point about considering special education students. Considering that those that do want to enroll do end up affecting us and if they unenroll, then we go back. There's a lot to that, assuming that that's still a possibility that we could end up back in person. But, uh, recognizing that one option is to go, it looks like schools are doing it all very differently and there's no, again, no easy answer. So we're talking potentially 50% tuition for a month of April. Anyone that's on free or reduced lunch, not special, not special education obviously is not paying. Anyone free to reduce is not paying would, um, get, um, reduced tuition accordingly. And anyone that would then reach out and say, look, we're, we're not working, it's like we can't pay, we'd like to stay enrolled. And then we revisit as we move forward.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
I need that repeated, so I can figure, I need to write that down.
So, this is all recognizing this was not an ideal circumstance and we're trying to mitigate difficult and try to support the students. And recognize we're a small district as well. So I would make a motion that at this time, we are considering, um, any services provided. Uh, it would be, was it on or after March 30th, Mary Jane?
Basically.
I don't have the papers in front of me, honestly.
Okay, so whenever that, it was, it was clear that we were doing a month length, was it on or after March 30th? That we will, um, offer all families that are preschool who are paying tuition, 50% reduction. And then, um, we would reduce even further based on free reduced lunch for other families or if they, um, indicate to us, because we would otherwise not know that they've recently had a job loss due to the current COVID-19 circumstances.
We want to say reduced or do we want to say free? Because reduced, we're going to do the same thing, they're gonna, they're going to.
Well, let's do this first, Mary, let's take a, um, yeah, yeah, okay. Let's take a, um, let's get through this motion, so that's my motion. When anyone second it, then we'll have discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Natasha Rivera is seconding my motion. Go ahead, discussion, what would you like to say, Mary Branley?
No, I would just, uh, it's still the same issue for the free and reduced meal people and/or people that have just recently, you know.
Yeah, so you just go free for them, is what you're saying.
Free for the month of April, basically, we're talking, and then we revisit it again in May and see what we're doing to keep those kids that are most in need of the service.
Yeah.
Just down the road for Irene and I think Colleen, but I, I'm thinking it's Irene's job, um, in her purview. Um, I remember Michelle Resendis saying that with the chapter 70 funding, that we, you know, we got less money last year because our enrollment is going down. And I, I wanted to know if, and it's not for right now, Irene, if you could just look into it, if that includes the preschool kids also? Because if it does, then this is another reason for us to keep everybody, um, you know, in school. That's for down the road.
I have a quick question, just because I know Jeannie will ask. Um, for those who are financially strapped, are we asking for proof of a layoff letter or something to that effect?
Yes, I think we need to do that. Don't you?
I have a, I, I don't know, Bo, that's, that's getting really, that's why it's hard to do that based on, like, you're now justifying, validating their personnel information. Do we normally do that for free and reduced lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yes, we do.
Okay, so then, yeah, it's just tough.
I know.
We are welcome to reconsider if we want to.
We have the same type of, um, requirements, whatever they would normally have to provide for free and reduced lunch.
People who are selected to verify for free and reduced, which happens every March, we do, 3% of our population have to provide income information. I do know that. But not on a typical application.
So are you saying, do we want to take someone at their word then, or we, I just feel like, um,
I think we should use the same, the same, um, standards that we use for the free and reduced lunch.
Okay.
I, I don't think.
That's right, I just want to make sure we're not asking any more of anybody than they would have to normally provide.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, um, with that in mind, then I, I'd like to withdraw my motion and make it again. Um, so what I'm going to say is a motion that, uh, from whatever point we moved into phase two, where we're actually doing remote learning, which we think on or after March 30th. So essentially for the month of April, we will provide, um, we will, preschool families that are paying, that they are paying 50% tuition. For those that are on free reduced lunch or that provide information that would, um, in, in. information that would, in light of COVID-19 emergent information that they have, their income has changed and qualifies qualifies them for free reduced lunch, they would pay no tuition for the month of April.
I second.
So Mary Branley seconds. Any further discussion?
We're saying that March is as is, correct? We're not touching March under this.
You're. You're that way, because there's only one day in in March, it's a whole day.
Are you going to revisit this again if it extends past May 4th? Yeah. Any further discussion? We're very appreciative of the discussion, I guess, here, sorry, was someone to say something else?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, so I'm, I then will take a roll call vote. I just, I just saw at the top of the screen, Natasha Rivera.
Yay.
Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, if I can say it. Beth Lynn Houlihan, yay, okay, 5 to 0, we'll do that for the month of April, we'll revisit May, thank you very much. Lots of difficult things to try to.
What about reimbursement for people who want to withdraw?
Do we need to cover that? Yeah, why don't we do another motion on that? Okay.
Isn't that what we already do, though?
Yeah, if it's the same as it usually is, right?
Yeah, I think we just follow this, our typical protocol.
But I don't think we need a motion on it.
Right. Because if they already, if they already unenroll normally, then they would get reimbursed.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to clarify with Colleen.
Are we allowing them to retro, to withdraw back to March 30th?
I think that's hard to do, I think that's what we were trying to say for April.
Yeah, let's do another motion, then, that's a good distinction. So make a motion that for those that, families that would choose to withdraw from the preschool program, that they would be able to do so retroactively to the, whenever the Phase 2 that was remote learning began, which may be on or after March 30th, we're not exactly sure, whatever that was, so let's say for the month of April.
I second.
So Natasha Rivera, second. So I'm gonna do, any discussion on that?
So are we saying that people whose children have been benefiting from the program can unenroll as of March 30th, even though they've been benefiting for the last two and a half weeks?
Well, because they weren't given an option prior to now.
Okay.
Right, I mean, it does sound like, based on what Jane says and everyone else said, they've been engaged, but, I mean, we haven't really taken up this issue, we didn't have complete information at our last meeting.
And obviously.
Again, I don't know if it's the right answer either, I mean, it's just, it's almost like you have to just start it somewhere.
Hopefully, no one will choose to unenroll it now that we've reduced tuition or made it free, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hope is that we're providing the necessary support for families for the month of April to be able to stick with us and see what, where we go from here. We'd love to be able to provide them that, right?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, then I'll take a roll call vote on that motion. Natasha Rivera. Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy.
Yay.
Beth Lynn Houlihan, 5 to 0, that passes as well. Thank you. Okay, so we're now going to move into budget update, again, this is one we put on here, not being quite sure as things were unfolding where they would be. So there are a lot of considerations, it would be great to understand where things stand at this moment and what other further conversations are planned, so, and understand anything that we might want to just. Next on the agenda, just to remind folks, is the GM move considerations and timing around that, which obviously relates into some of our considerations, not for operational budget, but, so we're gonna do that separately. So. I don't know, I don't think, did the Budget Subcommittee get to meet?
Yeah.
If there's anything you'd want to report?
I'm. Oh, Mary, do you want to, or do you want me to?
Well, I think Mary Jane was the one that pretty much brought us up, because brought us up to the town and and the town's thought process of our budget. So Mary Jane, do you want to talk to that?
And if you don't, if I could just interrupt for one second before you do that, I want to remind folks that Colleen did add the memorandum from our Town Administrator Gregory Johnson dated April 3, 2020, around town financial planning in response to COVID-19, which was sent to the Board of Selectmen and shared with us, that's also in your folder. Okay, sorry, carry on.
Yep, okay, so I had some conversations, and at this point, you know, the town has said for us to proceed in the budget that we had already set forth earlier in, in late fall or the winter. But I heard, this is new to Mary and Lydia, I heard this morning from MAFS that the governor will be going back to the drawing board on his budget, so that may impact ours at some point, but as of this point, we are moving forward with the budgets we've already worked on. So we're gonna, I'm gonna meet with Brian and Jennifer and Irene on Wednesday to revisit the budget to make sure that we are on track and to look at the staffing allocations and such as we've had in the past. And then I would like to revisit that with the admin team again on the 21st, and then again, with the whole school committee, and then have our public meeting on May 7. A couple of other things that I've talked about for the capital plan, I did have some conversations with Justin DiMarco as far as prioritizing some of the capital planning, and and I talked to Adam as well. The bathrooms at Fowler and Green Meadow really have to be done, so that is definitely a priority. That is a plumbing issue, and it's a safety issue for students with the hot water, especially at Green Meadow, and and at Fowler, the sinks really need to be redone because the water runs. So those two things are clearly going to continue to move forward. As far as the Wi-Fi, I did talk to Adam, he said that update is for the high school, but definitely that can wait another year, this seems to be doing okay right now, so we can wait another year on that. And as far as the projector at Green Meadows, he said we can make do, if we have funding, then we can move forward with that, but at this point, you know, he can put that on hold as well. So that's what we have for the capital plan, and I did let you know that we are moving forward with posting for the business manager position. I posted the position earlier last week, I want to say Monday, or Tuesday last week, and Colleen posted that. We actually have three applicants at this point, and beginning the end of this week, I will be calling out to staff members to participate in a committee for the, for the business manager, and that will take place soon as and later, I hope we have somebody ready to go July, so I'm hoping to have the person appointed by July, June 1st. That's all gonna have to be virtual meetings at this point, until something else happens. I don't think what else they have, because I said my notes are in my computer, what else did I have?
Mary Jane, I have a question about the Green Meadow, the smart link that you mentioned. I know that there were some classes that didn't have any smart board or bright links at Green Meadow, and is there any possibility to consider prioritizing at a minimum the ones that are without totally? I just think it's an equity issue as far as classroom instruction?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Adam was saying, I mean, I think, we're going to definitely take a look at that and prioritize the ones that need to be done, I think that we, you know, what he was talking about, we'll try to, what's the word he used, I can't, I don't have my notes right here.
Okay.
He said he would try to, can be worked on, is what he said, so he's gonna try to get as many as he can with what we have, they may not be, you know, the newest, latest and greatest at this point, but he's gonna do his best to try to accommodate what he can based on what we have, through some, you know, some of his wizardry.
Okay, yes, and he has, he's a master wizard in all of these IT areas, so. Okay, yeah, that would be my only concern, is that I know there were some classes that were totally without, that were just not at all working at all, and and I just didn't want them to have to potentially wait till next year, because they had wires that had to be taped down through a projector, just seemed like a very unsafe setup in some of the classrooms.
Absolutely, and he did, he did say that, you know, we're gonna see what I can do to refurbish and and get things working in the meantime, but again, the waters and the sinks are much more pressing, because I think it's a safety concern.
Oh, yeah, the water thing, especially in light of the townwide issues with water, I mean, we can't have water just freely running at Fowler. You know, that's, I think, important as well, and sanitation piece as well.
Yep. Where does HVAC stand?
Where does what?
GM HVAC. Is that still a concern?
I don't have any information on that right now, I haven't heard any on the HVAC from, from Justin, I believe he sent a document out, he's saying he's gonna resend it to me, I don't have a copy of something, so I just talked to him today on that, so he's going to send me out something, and I can probably update you next time on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So the priorities would be bathrooms, district-wide Wi-Fi can wait, and then looking at the scope of the projectors for Green Meadow, those are the free cash, I think, asks for the capital projects.
Correct, correct, and the Wi-Fi situation with the others, the bathrooms cannot, and the projector here, he's gonna try to stretch what he can to fix what he can to get everybody, you know, quasi up to speed, but we all know Adam, so I'm sure he's gonna do remarkable things to get everything done.
Right. Is there a possibility with, I mean, I know we've gotten like Chromebooks this year, and that we maybe had some budget for next, like, some of that could be reallocated next year? And I don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed, how is, you know?
Some of that Chromebook money, some of that Chromebook money we allocated for next year, we're using this year, so, for the Chromebook we're buying now, so it's really hard to tell at this point, Natasha, some of that money, as I said, we bought, we're buying the additional 100 right now.
Right.
So that's what we're looking to do. Again, we're not gonna really know the budget situation until, until the numbers come out, I mean, it's so hard, we're in so, such influx, but we're going forward with the, the budget we planned, but I'm a little leery at this point, based on the information we got this morning.
So what's next, as far as considering that this is, this is evolving, so what will happen between now and our next meeting that might help, or what, what do you need for us to be able to help get us prepared for whatever we can for that public hearing?
I, I think we're just gonna move forward with what we have, moving forward, I think Jennifer and I, and Irene and Brian will get together to really take a look at the numbers, meet with the teachers, do the reallocation, get that information out, and put it in a firm outline so everybody can see, I, at this point, we're just moving forward, Mike goes, it assured me that, let's just move forward, and we'll move on that way. And then I know Green Meadow, it's gonna be something else, so that's a different consideration.
The Budget Subcommittee meeting is happening on the 21st, and then we are meeting on the 22nd again, so.
Correct.
It would be helpful, and I guess, Lydia, this is for Mary, just to get whatever, a synopsis of your Budget Subcommittee meeting, like, quickly turned around for everybody, for us to, for the 22nd?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that can be done, I mean, I know Natasha sent me a list of questions, and I think all those questions can be answered on that particular day, so I'm very confident that we're ready to go, and we just need to revisit it as a group, and really get some input from Brian, I mean, he's gonna be here next year, so I'd like to hear, you know, what his thoughts are on, on, on moving forward.
I did have a question about budget transfers, I know right now, we've kind of doing a whole bunch of maybe movement potentially in what, where we are, and I know at some point that the school committee is supposed to weigh in on when things are potentially being transferred from a cost center to a cost center, and I don't know if that's on the radar.
It is, I'm gonna throw that over to Irene, as far as I know, we haven't done much yet, so let me, maybe Irene can answer that, but yes, you are required to do budget transfer. Irene, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. We haven't done anything yet, I've been waiting in part to get some of the decisions, for example, on the preschool, also more information on Excel, so that I can say, look, here's what's happening with these funds.
Right.
And, and here's where we, you know, and those are the two, plus the school lunch, where there are potential problems. Give you anything to say, well, here, I need this transfer, it's over, and some of it, again, depends on whether or not we open May 4th. Yeah, so that's, that's a large part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have all those answers until we decide, you know, where the shortfalls are, and we're gonna have to take them from Natasha at this point. Right now, we're operating and we're, we're okay, but once we start seeing where the deficits lie, we're gonna have to see where we're gonna move that money around.
And again, it's on the radar, we're watching them, but I can't give you hard numbers yet, I wish I could.
Oh, I don't, I don't think, I, I wasn't anticipating you having numbers, just the action of, of doing the transfer that we would need to be ready for, and I think that just probably, as we're planning the budget, it might be a conversation of the agenda for each of our meetings, to see if anything has evolved or come new that we want to add to the agenda that Colleen would want to put in for us.
No, we just have to.
That's a good point.
I do just wanna, yeah, check in with Mary and Lydia and see if there's anything they'd like to say, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think we've got until June 30th to do that, it's just so much is up in the air that I don't foresee us even being able to have that conversation until maybe like mid-June, when we really have a much better feel for what we're looking at.
For the warrants?
For the, for the transfer, because the transfer is internally, correct?
Yeah, but you probably want to do it sooner than that if you can, I will have the numbers before, before June.
Okay.
Because we'll know whether or not we're back by then, either in May or June or not at all, and that's, of course, gonna have a huge impact. But yeah, definitely by June 1, I know whether or not we're coming back, I know whether or not Excel's up and running and people are paying. The bigger question marks are actually gonna be for next year, because we count on significant income in July and August from College Gate and from the Excel program, and if those aren't gonna be happening for some reason, yeah, that's, that's a whole nother story. But for the FY '20 budget for any transfers, no, I, I should have a pretty good idea by June 1, what's going on with that.
Irene.
Yep.
When we discussed College Gate on Monday, was it 15 to 16,000, or was it 50 to 60?
I thought I heard 50 to 60, Colleen, can you verify that?
I'm pretty sure it's 50 to 60, 5 to 60 as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
And the other thing that Irene is keeping track of is facility, the lack of facilities rentals, there was a lot of categories, so she's keeping track of all of that, so that we know exactly where all of our revenue is not.
Losses are, yeah, shortfalls.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, part of, part of the budget considerations, because when we did build that budget, and some of those considerations were for, you know, College Gate, so again, we have to go back and take a look at that and, and see where we can make adjustments to, to fill in those gaps where.
Okay. Well, thank you for the monitoring and keeping on track, we'll look forward to hearing further as the Budget Subcommittee meets, is there anything else anyone wanted to check in on and update, if anyone else got up to share at this time?
I'm pretty confident by the beginning of May, we'll be ready to go and have, and have everything really straightened out, so I, again, the last month, we've been really focusing on getting this remote plans in place, so the budget kind of hasn't been on, on top of the radar, other than, you know, let's try to make sure everybody's getting the services they need, now it's really time to move forward and, and focus on next year in the summer.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll have a, at least a better sense of that by our next meeting, I'm, I'm gonna guess that they're gonna have to call it one way or the other for May, or I would imagine they'd consider the rest of the year at that point, this school year, but we'll see.
And it looked like, based on Greg's memo, that was one, what he wanted us to deliberate on was the prioritization of the free cash considerations, which we talked about, and then the other piece, which is the next agenda, is the roof.
Okay. All right, then, I will move on to the next agenda item. All right, then, um I will move on to the next agenda item. I think Natasha provided a very nice segue. Uh, so GM roof considerations and timing and talking through that.
Yeah, so when we were talking about the budget on Friday, um there was some good conversation that came up about the roof and how we deal with that and the feasibility study. It was Mary Jane's suggestion, I'll give her credit, that um that we have, um because Greg was making some recommendations too, but that we let the fire station um be in the spring and that we postponed the roof, um the 650 plus the feasibility study until the fall, the special town meeting. The idea being that the two of them make a lot of sense to vote together and
I think, hello, is Mary frozen?
I'm unmuting Irene. So I thought she was trying to say something.
Nope.
Mary, are you frozen? Yeah.
Like you.
There, you're back, Mary. Mary, you froze for about twenty, no, maybe ten seconds. It felt longer. If you could repeat what you said back up a little.
About the roof and about, okay, so um the conversation was that um fire station should happen in the spring at springtime meeting and that we would that the the roof, um the amount of 650 or less um for those portions of the roof, as well as the feasibility study happen at the fall town meeting. The idea being that um it's impossible now for us to get the roof done this summer, because of the timing. And it would actually, the two pieces together, the feasibility study and the roof, uh make a lot of sense to go together. And it would also put us at the beginning of the of the list as far as being able to get contractors to um to to be able, you know, put us in the front of the line for next summer to get
For the next year.
Yeah, so. Mary Jane gets credit for it because it was her. She was really pushing for that one.
So then we're talking about having the um the roof done next summer and that this whole next year, we're still gonna be stuck with the pre-K section being closed. Jennifer, can you?
Yeah, I I think, I I, yeah, I'll let Jennifer talk about it. I think really, realistically speaking, because Mar, the town meeting is not gonna be until June. In order for us to put a bid out and and collect the money from the town, I don't think it's um reasonable to have contractors come in in a month to to do the roof. And they're already gonna be behind with their projects now because of all of this. And then um I just can't imagine that they'd be ready to to put the roof in in August or even July.
I think it's an issue though with um what we've spent in that pre-K area, going through a whole winter. Um, just protecting what we've already invested. I don't know if it might be more that we could consider reducing the scope where it's just the pre-K. Um, and then um at the, what Greg had shared from CBI, that there might be a delay in just that area, the pre-K area potentially, where we can get, at least get the pre-K roof done. And that might be a delayed occupancy for a couple of weeks.
I I mean, that's an option. I I'm just very hesitant that you're gonna be able to find somebody. But I could be wrong. I mean, I don't really know.
Right, and I don't know either. I I wonder if that should be something that Greg, they would worry about. I mean, I don't know if they have an issue that comes back where they can't. Um, they can't find somebody. Obviously, we'd have to reassess, but I don't want us to pull back preemptively without, without having them, because they haven't given that indication in what they've shared.
I also think we need to consider the fact that FinCom has been very vocal about the fact that they wanna protect the investment. And they've been supportive of going ahead with fixing the roof because of that. And I'm a little hesitant to now delay that, although I I don't personally think we'll be able to get contractors in there. I also feel like we need to do what we can to secure the funding, even if it means waiting until next year to actually have the work done.
Correct. That's kinda what I was thinking. You know, even if we have to wait till next year, definitely secure the funding. Jennifer, do you wanna hop in here?
I mean, so a couple of things. I think um one of the reasons that we wanted to, are my, am I on mute?
Nope, you're on. You're good.
Um, I don't like not being on video, it turns out. No, um, so one of the things that we wanted to do and the reason to get the roof done this summer was to reopen the preschool wing to students. Um, we currently, um in terms of our preschool enrollment, are not going to see the increase in order to open up those extra classrooms. Um, and so that will not be a need. Um, you know, I think in terms of the usability of the space, we've been using it this winter for our staff. Um, I think in terms of protecting the investment, um, there's a lot of different choices that we could make in that capacity. Um, one of them is to look at a load analysis, load bearing analysis, I think they're called, um, to determine what parts of that preschool roof actually need to be replaced. And there's a distinct possibility that it's a very small portion of that preschool roof in terms of actual, um, you know, load bearing issues. Um, again, I'm not a contractor, so I'm using the wrong words um in terms of, in terms of describing this. Um, I do think just in terms of looking at all of the needs within the town, um, if it were a matter of we're gonna do this anyway and there would be no other consequences, then sure, go ahead and secure the funding um this spring to potentially use next summer. I think that's fine. If in fact, however, um by doing that, you are precluding or we are precluding the investment that the community has determined is necessary within a fire station for work that's not going to be done for a year anyway. Um, I just feel like maybe that's something that should be considered.
I'm afraid we won't get the funding.
What?
I'm afraid we might not get the funding for the roof if the fire station goes first, because that's a bigger bill.
I mean, that's possible, but I also think in terms of the different projects, I mean, what we've talked about with the town um in terms of looking at our schools and what we need to do within our resources. And this was the focus of all the tri board meetings that you guys were at, is what do we need to do for the town in its entirety? Um, how do we look at things together rather than in isolated pockets? Um, and I think that requires a great deal of trust that one group is not going to out lobby the other. Um, and so I just think that's worth considering as well, um that if we're looking at this from a whole town perspective, um, what is the route if we secure funding and then we don't do anything for a year?
So if we can secure funding, um, I think one of the things that um Greg and CBI are indicating is that the design that when the designs got done, um would really be the critical piece. So if payment for the design of the roof would be able to be secured before town meeting, which I don't know if if Greg had given any indication this is possible, um, that will help in in possibly getting the pre-K roof done this summer. As far as timeline.
I believe Greg sent out a memo, um, I I don't know about, you know, what it would take to get the roof fixed this summer. And I think the earliest he mentioned that we could fix the roof would possibly be in the fall. And if it, and they can't fix the roof in the fall if the students are gonna be in the building. So I think that's what his recommendation was from CBI.
Yes, so that's the paper in front of me. Time frame, he was talking about best case scenario.
Yeah, let me pull up the information again, because I know um
I got it right here. So
Yeah, the timing.
You can pull it up too in the meantime, but um, so it says, uh, Michael Teller from um CBI. He was saying if he could design now and then and bid before town meeting, um, then it's possible that they could try to get something done, but everything's being backed up. So already people are getting backed up, so it could be tricky. If we have to wait to bid until um six thirteen, so June 13, and figure two weeks to bid, two weeks for contract, they have to do the roof four weeks, best case scenario. Um, he planned his pretty and think of end of September for when they could get something done if if everything went through. And then if we don't design, do our design contract until June 13th, we won't have the bid documents for three to four weeks. Then you have to bid two weeks. Then you get the contractor or contract two weeks, four weeks construct. Brings you to mid-September at best. So in that case scenario, you plan for end of October. In either case, you're looking at moving into the school year with the construction if you go with a roof.
And we're talking about just the pre-K area that would be not occupied, correct? So the rest of the building would be occupied, but not the pre-K.
Right. Which is what Jennifer said, won't be a problem this year because of our enrollments.
Right.
So, yeah, what what Greg's original ask and the original thought was around, I can ask the justice if they can delay occupancy of the pre-K and kindergarten wing, if that would help, but it just sounds like
I think just the pre.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other consideration is what Jen is saying, if we're able to, that's how I'm hearing, is either moving forward just pre-K, given the timing, um, now that's already closed. Another option to be more uh conservative will be to see where there's load bearing concerns. And then, and it, remember that it costs more to do the roof piecemeal as opposed to do it altogether. So, I don't know, it may be worth seeing if, because that was actually the reason why we closed was load bearing concerns. So if we can find where, and and even in the report, Michael from CBI that there wasn't clear that there was really a lot, there was a very specific, he, his impression, even though we didn't do this direct analysis, was that there was a small area, even in the pre-K wing, that would have any particular concern around load bearing. Of course, you can't guarantee anything. Um, this, but, and if we just focus in and target and do that work, that might be done before the kids go back to school. That, if it's small enough, it's potential that could be done. That's my thought.
Right. And also just remember, um, school starts later this year too, so September 8th is when uh, I mean, you have like a little bit day before, but Labor Day this year is September 7th, so.
I believe the students go back September 1st or 2nd.
Yeah, that first or in September.
Consider is in terms of the cost um that we would pay for contractors within this. You know, we were looking at, because of the time of getting the bid out, we were already looking at maybe getting a higher cost um for the contractors bidding because of them having already designed their summer projects. Um, if everything's getting backed up as it says, you know, we're gonna be, um, we may be paying more. And then in terms of doing it in the fall, um, if we're gonna have people working in session, they're gonna have to do it after hours. Um, and I know I had asked that question from the CBI consultant and he had indicated that sometimes you can get a big company that has multiple shifts and you actually get a deal in that capacity. Um, but other times, I wind up paying a lot more. Um, you know, so I think those are all just considerations as well. Um, you know, obviously, the safety of our students and our staff are first and foremost. And so I think maybe doing a load analysis and figuring out what actually needs to be done um would be important or 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 could be an option.
We know how much that costs?
No, I don't know. Yeah, I talked to Justin about that. That was supposed to be in the request for RFQ, but apparently um it didn't come through. So I actually talked to Justin about that today. He actually thinks that might be a better way for us to go if we can't get the roof done in time. So he's, he'll get back to me on that within the next couple of days. He's going to talk to Greg about that. I talked to, maybe it was yesterday. Yeah, it was yesterday, it was not today.
So maybe, maybe next time, we can revisit the conversation?
If he has, if he has information.
I mean, I don't know. Aren't they voting on warrants and articles? And one of them is about the three hun, the six hundred and fifty thousand making a recommendation.
Well, can't we, we can put a placeholder in there for it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and if we decide that we're gonna withdraw it, that's not a big deal. They do it all the time.
Exactly, exactly. So with this load analysis, what do we hope to to have come out of that? A a case of whether we do a small portion or?
Well, I think what it would tell you is that it gives you the very specific areas of the preschool side of the roof that needs to be done now. So what is, what is some, what is stuff that is essential and must be done for safety and security of the building space? Um, I think in reading the CBI report and in talking with Mike, um, the kindergarten side of of the roof needs to be done within the next couple of years. Um, but that doesn't need to be done now. Um, and in talking with Justin, his, his preference has always been to do them as one project. So if there's something that can be shored up in the meantime, um, again, a space we're not putting students in um currently, if there's something that can be shored up to make sure that the the roof is safe, um, then you can do that over the summer potentially and then have the larger project next summer um where we would be at the front of the line for our bids. We would likely get the best price um and things of that nature.
And in the meantime, go ahead, Jennifer, sorry.
No, I was just saying as an option.
Yeah. And meantime, that would allow us to protect the investment, which is, has been a consideration for everyone to make sure that we're um that we're, we're not putting ourselves at risk of something else happening to that space in the meantime if we're not repairing it all.
And we also have to be cogn, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that the MSBA requires us to maintain those buildings. So if we, the roof has to be done because, you know, that's part of the uh the agreement.
Will the cost of the load bearing analysis um go towards the thirty percent trigger point?
We can ask Justin. I don't know that.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know either.
We don't know, but I'm gonna make a guess. My guess would be no, because it is not something physical in the building that is there permanently.
Okay.
Okay, but again, that's just, that's just a guess. Well, any work we did, yes, any work we did would count, but the 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 cost of the feasibility it study itself would not.
Yeah. So much to consider. Okay. So what I'm hearing is we've just laid out um all the considerations and we're gonna get more information in relation, they're gonna see Mary Jane, if you could get more in relation to um load bearing analysis and what that would cost from Justin.
Okay. No problem. Yeah, he said he was gonna look into it and talk to Greg about it. So I will, hopefully I'll have an answer in the next couple of days. Because I think um it was supposed to be part of the R and we, uh, part of the RFQ, but we never received that information. So I'm not really sure where it stands.
Yeah, I thought that was done a while ago. I didn't realize it was never performed.
Correct.
Is there a concern about um having, say, this does get punted to the fall? Um, having the feasibility study and the roof on the same, I I I worry about that being passed.
I actually think it makes more sense as a, as an article, if you think about it in terms of, you know, how people process what is being put forward. What we were talking about um currently is that we would do a fire station and the green matter roof this spring. And then next fall, we're all of a sudden gonna go and say, hey, let's go ahead and study the school. Um, whereas in this scenario, if you were to push the vote to the fall, and again, you don't have to do that in any capacity. Um, but if you were to do that, you are saying, okay, so we know we need a new school. In order to get us there, we need a roof. And here's how we're gonna vote on the feasibility to get into the MSBA process. So it's it's a more natural conversation um than, you know, going back and saying, wait a minute, why did we just vote on a roof if we're gonna build a new building, et cetera, et cetera. But I do think, Natasha, to your point, all of this has to be couched in with all of the boards and with all of the residents. This is not a school department plan or a board of selectmen plan or a fire station plan. This is a town of Maynard plan. And this is what we have to do for the entirety of the town of Maynard. Um, and get people on board with that, which is what we've been talking about. Um, and I think you guys have made some really good headway in trying to figure that out right before, you know, the world.
Yeah, I would like to, again, try to see if we can get a tri board meeting again with all of these pieces moving. I feel like we're in limbo and we're kind of making decisions a little bit in in our silo of of what we think is the priority. Now things are shifting. Um, I don't know if it's worthwhile to revisit again.
I agree. I think we need a tri board uh somehow.
So I, I, I just worry that FinCom might not agree with, we're thinking about the fall, you know, and Greg, I don't know, so.
Personally, I think we've got a better shot at getting the roof and the feasibility done in the Personally, I think we've got a better shot at getting the roof and the feasibility done in the fall than I do to have us, um, at the same time as this FinCom meeting. Because I think it's more difficult for us to separate ourselves and to do a really good job of educating people, so.
So there's a, a second follow-up then to try to see, and this is something that, um, chaired and shaped the chairs, to try to see about a tri board meeting in May, trying for the first two weeks in May or something. Middle of May.
Good old May.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other, um, considerations around roof at this time? We've talked about it again in our next meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you. That was a helpful discussion as we're juggling so many things. Um, and it was also helpful to have Greg had shared his memo and his thinking, and thank you for subcommitting your thoughts and all that you've all been doing to keep up with us and Mary Jane, your considerations. And Jennifer, I know you've been really keeping track of the longevity of all this since you've been involved for so long with these issues, so thank you.
Let's all pray that maybe MSBA gets extended, deferred, potentially.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't set on that.
Yeah.
I'm still gonna pray for it.
You can, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and, yeah, there might be, I don't know if, um, Natasha, you had mentioned this separately and I was thinking about this and, uh, wondering, and I don't know if Josh would know if it makes any difference to, to consider that, because seeing Mary Brantley, you've always been so good with that. So I, I don't know if that's something that considers on the side, just to mention.
I just think anything we can promote our, you know, we, we don't want to lose our spot there. And if it comes down to a concern that the town is not willing at this moment to venture there, then, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
We haven't had time to prepare them either, and we normally do. Yeah, okay. So we're gonna move into members' comments. We're, we're at seven o'clock. Just time check for people to know. Um, I now have my paper and pen, so I'm not gonna make anyone feel, uh, more pressured with the timer. I apologize if people felt pressure last time. That was my only means available to me at the moment. Um, so just, uh, I'll open it up to anyone that wants to say anything.
Um, I just wanted to.
Okay, go ahead, Mara.
I just wanted to thank everybody, um, all the staff and, um, teachers and parents and, uh, and really everybody, um, getting together and working all this out, um, this, you know, the last few weeks have been really stressful for everybody. Um, and I think, um, you know, we, we tried really hard, the, you know, over the last, especially the last couple of weeks, trying to work out this, um, remote learning plan. And I think, you know, Jennifer and Mary Jane, um, and, you know, your whole leadership team, I think you guys did a fantastic job. Um, it was, I felt like when I got it, um, as a parent, it was much, uh, much cleaner and, you know, really very, um, thought out well and, um, I think it really helped me, uh, be able to see how to plan, um, for the next couple of weeks with my kids. Um, and the, the direction that I've gotten from the teachers have been, also been fantastic. Um, hearing from not just, um, my fifth grade, um, uh, teachers, students, teachers, but also, um, seventh grade and high school have been really fantastic. So thank you so very much.
Absolutely. I'm proud of our team. Yep.
Amen to that. Ditto. I think all of us would say ditto.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Um, Mara, did you have anything else? And then Natasha was kind of, you guys had done a little duel there, so I was gonna have her go next.
No, I'm all set.
Uh, I just wanted to, um, just to tell everybody, just to be kind to yourself. I know we have so many, as adults, um, transitions going on in all of our lives right now with, um, teaching, parenthood, um, work. And, um, and it's, it's, it's just tough to process for everybody, you know? And I've had crying, my own crying with my kids and how to work through that. And, um, I just really thank everyone for, for really just trying. You know, right now, that's all you can really ask of people is just try. And when you recognize when you need a moment, take it yourself. And it will, we'll all be fine in the end, ultimately. Um, but I just appreciate all the staff encouragement, um, that's been coming through as well. And also, um, to what you mentioned earlier, Beth Lynn, about the parade. I mean, it's tough stuff. You know, we're talking about, we talk about health and safety for, for folks, and it's just not easy to really find the right answer to get to. Um, because they're all considered, you know, people's social, emotional wellbeing, um, what that would, is really important. Um, and so, you know, if anyone, um, I just wanna just keep, you know, hang in there, reach out if you need help and be patient and kind with yourself. And if you can't do it, then you take a break and, you know, you do what you can and you move on. Um, but Jennifer and the team, uh, the website looks great. I think you guys have really, um, Adam, you know, really put everything in a place and it was really easy to navigate through, um, for the remote learning plan. So, so thank you for all the efforts there and, um, and just we'll get through this together.
Thanks, Natasha. Mary or Lydia?
Go. So again, um, to all of the incredible work that the, right from the top on down as far as the school side goes of putting this together and the challenges, um, even dropping off Chromebooks to kids. And it just, it's just amazing the number of hours and the energy that's gone in. I also want to put a shout out to the parents, to the caretakers, um, because they've got the other side. And we've got parents that have either lost their jobs, um, so they're struggling with that stress. Or the other side, they are working very hard at their current jobs at home at the same time that they're expected to now teach the kids at home. So it takes that side also. So, um, we really need to, um, put a shout out to them too, because they're, they're, like I say, they're, they're just working so hard themselves. And, um, I was disappointed that, that I'll be the first to say I was disappointed about the parade, because I thought that, and with everything that's going on, it was just a moment for the teachers to see the kids, the kids to see the teachers. And I'm hoping that, um, that we can find an alternative to that, because I really think that more people than not are in favor of doing it. And I think people, we underestimate how cautious people are and how they were really going to take serious precaution. Everybody understands the importance of the social distancing. And I think we underestimate people that they were going, especially when it comes to our kids, they were gonna take the necessary precautions. So I'm, I'm really hoping that we can find an alternative, because I, I know that there were an awful lot of disappointed people. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Lydia?
Um, I was gonna mention the parade, but I, I think at this point, everything has been said and it's sore spot, so I'm not going to. I, I will say that I have been incredibly surprised by actually the lack of precaution taken in town. And I was even ridiculed the other day in CBS for wearing a mask. Though I, I, I don't, um, I don't think everyone is on the same page in terms of precautions and, um, social distancing. And we, we don't have control over what people do in the crowds. And it just, it was not a risk that I felt was worth us taking, because it would be a school-sponsored event and we would have been liable. And I know people are upset. I know they're disappointed. I thought it was a great idea. The timing was just wrong. And, um, if we could plan another thing, I agree with Mary, that, that it would be great. Oh, shoot. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, um, I, I think that it would be a great thing to do. And perhaps if, if we take, um, a little more time in planning it, plan a longer route so that people don't have to crowd together and, um, consult with the Maynard Board of Health and, and things like that, just to make sure. But at, at the, on the eve of a 10-day window where things are gonna peak in Massachusetts, it's already lining up to being the second, um, highest rate of death in the U.S. due to COVID, I, I just didn't feel like it was something that, that we could, could risk. And as leaders in this town, we need to set a good example. So I know people are disappointed and I'm sorry. And yes, it would have been fantastic. I just, I wasn't comfortable going forward with it.
Thank you, Lydia. Yes, the, the only thing I'd say is just even in this meeting, we're all just trying to make decisions around very difficult things to make decisions on in circumstances. And that's what, um, I just want to acknowledge, just, I know that, uh, Mary Jane and many people in it, like everyone in their role, but in particular, it's really hard at a time like this to be the leader trying to make calls on things that you have to make calls on and decide and that are difficult. Everyone's gonna feel differently and have different circumstances and thoughts around these things. And they're more heightened at times like this and when it's all emerging and rapidly changing. So I just wanna thank Mary Jane for everything that she's been doing. Um, and, um, and again, as we've all said, everyone in the role that they've done. This kind of getting through this requires everyone playing the part that they have to contribute. And I just am grateful for that. But, um, at this moment, I just wanted to thank Mary Jane, because I know how much she's putting in and.
She's our unsung hero.
Yeah, but there's so many.
Yes, she is.
So that's, that's all I would say. I thank everyone and, um, appreciate the time and what we've managed to do in remote learning. Uh, and I guess, uh, that's all I have to say for the moment. Is there anyone else's last thought?
Take care of yourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, please take good care. And, um, all right then, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
That's Natasha Rivera. Lydia Clancy seconds. All right. Well, in, roll it all favor. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. I, Mary Hogan. Mara Hogan. Are we done?
It's a trick question.
I know. Yes.
Mara Hogan, Mary Brantley. Say yes, Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned. Take good care, everybody. Be well.
You too. Bye.
Thank you.